Everybody ready?
Six o'clock.
Forgot I gotta start this show tonight, don't I?
It's your show. You didn't get to have it.
I'll just start as it is. Anyway, appreciate everybody coming. I will call the meeting to order noting that we do have a quorum of all seven board members present at this time. I invite Pastor Paul Arnold from Asbury Church to lead us in vacation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Loving heavenly Father God, as we come to you again today, Lord, we just come thanking you for this opportunity to be here this evening. Lord, we thank you, God, for all your many blessings upon us, Lord. We thank you for these folks that have gathered here this evening. And Lord, we just thank you, God, that we still live in a country where we have the freedoms to come and to decide and determine things in our government, Lord, and the system that it is that was set up and designed so many years ago, Lord. And we just thank you, God, for the country and the nation in which we live, Lord, and how that are set up and founded upon biblical principles, Lord. And we just thank you, God, that we can come here this evening. And we just thank you, God, that we're able to come and to make these decisions as they do, Lord. We just pray, God, that you'd put your hand upon this place this evening, Lord, that you'd touch each one as they gather here, Lord. We pray, God, that you'd give them knowledge, give them wisdom, Lord, and just pray, God, that you'd help them to make sound decisions. We pray, God, not only in this local government, Lord, but in the government on the state level and as far as the national level, God, we just pray that you would bless the leaders, Lord. We pray, God, that you'd help them to make sound decisions. We pray, God, that you'd bless each one as they've gathered here, Lord, that you'd keep your hand upon each one as they travel back to their homes, Lord. And we just pray, God, that you'd have your will in your way in everything that we say and do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start the meeting first, I will welcome Mr. Dicky Morgan as the Speedwood District Supervisor. Mr. Morgan, nice to have you onboard. Look forward to working with you. Mr. Vault, Mr. Cook, thank you for y'all's leadership over the last year as chairman and vice chairman. Appreciate that. And now for 2024, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for Chair.
Make a motion to nominate Mr. Brian Vault to remain his chair for this upcoming year.
A motion to nominate Mr. Vault.
Second.
Have a second. Are there any other further nominations? Hearing none, do I have a motion to close nominations and elect Brian Vault by acclamation?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Vault, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. I'll echo what Mr. Bear said. Welcome Mr. Morgan. Mr. Morgan brings several, several years of business experience and served on the JIDA two terms. So we look forward to serving with you and enjoy the ride. It's fun every now and then.
With that being said, I'll open the floor up for nominations for Vice Chair for 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Roland Cook.
Right. Have a motion to nominate Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Any other nominations? Right. Hearing none, do I have a motion to close the nominations and elect Mr. Cook by acclamation?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Congratulations, Mr. Cook. Per our rules of procedure, I will again appoint Mr. Smith as pro-tem and based on my attendance and Mr. Cook's hard work, you might not have to do.
You'll keep up the good work.
All right. Next item on our agenda is our meeting calendar for 2024. I believe Ms. Collins has provided us a meeting calendar for this year. I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting calendar as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Any questions or discussion on the meeting calendar as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The meeting calendar is approved. Next, we have our rules of procedure for 2024. Again, we have all received this in advance of the meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the rules of procedure for 2024.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Any questions or discussion on the rules of procedure? All right. Hearing none, we'll do roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda, citizens' time. We don't have anybody signed up for citizens' time, so I'll move on to a public hearing about the South Crest.
Drive transportation.
You know, I used to not have to put these on. And then they changed this Adobe stuff. We have a public hearing on the South Crest Drive Transportation District. I'll read the public notice for the record. The With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing Tuesday, January the 9th, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. or as soon as thereafter, as practical, in the Board of Supervisors' Meeting Room 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. The public hearing is open to comment on an ordinance establishing the South Crest Drive Transportation District in the Fort Chiswell District. This service district will provide for street improvements to serve landowners pursuant to Section 15.2-2400 of Dakota, Virginia. Copy of the proposed district is available in the County Administrator's Office. Full review. The public may comment in person at the public hearing or submit written responses to Ms. Martha Collins at the address listed or by email at the email address listed. We do not have anybody signed up to speak on the public hearing, so I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. Mr. Bear, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, despite the fact that no one is here, I will point out on page 20 of your agenda is a petition that was signed by all but one resident of the South Crest Drive Transportation District. Mr. Morgan, I will back up here, my apologies. Transportation service districts, we have used over the years to bring non-state maintained roads into the system. VDOT has approved revenue sharing funds for this road. The residents come up with their share of the cost for that. And so this is an ordinance to, to put in place additional taxes that all the residents have agreed to pay. This is a levy of $702.20 for each of the landowners. It'll be over a period of seven years. Once VDOT constructs a road and we have actual final cost, we revise it and adjust the tax rates as necessary. But, Mr. Chairman, with the resident support of this, and they've also already finalized a plat for a, what's the word, a cul-de-sac at the end of the road, I would recommend that the Board approve this ordinance for the South Crest Drive Transportation District.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Smith to approve the transportation district. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Moving on, we have our payment of invoices. Each board member has received in their board package a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Any questions, discussion, or any invoice that any board member wants to pull out? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is the minutes of our previous meeting from December the 27th, 2023. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, we'll do, our, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is our yearly audit presentation from Mr. Corbin Stone.
Chairman, board members, thanks for having me here today. Probably have all received the audit report. I think it's 140 pages long, maybe more than that. But we're gonna go over the cliff notes tonight, which is that handout I passed out to everyone right before the meeting. And the first thing I'll tell you is the audit went well. Really, the finance department did a good job of getting the books ready for the audit at the county and the school board. So the audit went very well. The county received an unqualified opinion. We did have a qualification on the school board's opinion, and that was due to some discrepancies at one of the schools. They have school activity funds that are maintained at each individual school, and we did have some discrepancies there. For one school, that led to a qualified opinion. I would expect that's gonna get cleaned up for next year. If you flip page one of the presentation, you may also have to use your high focus to see some of these numbers. It's not because they're small numbers, but they're just small print. On page one, you can see the governmental fund balance for the general fund decreased a little bit from 22 to 23. That top line from about $61 million, well, $61.5 million to about $56.5 million. That was largely due to the use of some bond proceeds for school construction, about $5 million worth. So if you take that out of the equation, you really wouldn't have much of a decrease in the general fund balance at all. The capital projects fund decreased a little bit, largely due to transfers to the water sewer funds for capital, capital items. The really important numbers, the one highlighted in yellow, that's your unrestricted funds of the general fund, and you can see that's, and that unrestricted is not restricted by any external source or designated by this Board or, or administration. That was at $43,422,000 at the end of '23, up just slightly from the prior year, down from 2021, but still a healthy balance. If we look at long-term obligations, we've got them highlighted in green there. You can see total long-term obligations of about $117,000, I'm sorry, about $117 million. That includes pension liabilities at the school board and any at the county, so it's not just outstanding debt. And that does compare favorably to the most recent state average we had. So your debt per capita, based on the most recent Weldon Cooper Center population estimates, is about $4,184. The last number we have from the state goes back to 2021, and the average for counties at that time was $6,545. So you're slightly below that average, and I would expect, I expect that average has actually gone up since 2021. The next page, I'm just kinda graphing out some of this information. And really, I compare unrestricted funds to long-term obligations for the, unrestricted general fund money to long-term obligations for the governmental activities, which is the county excluding the school board. And I just see how those things are trending. Hopefully, they're trending together. So if debt goes up, the unrestricted balances are going up as well. And you can see, they're trending along nicely here, so even though debt went up against in '22 with the issuance of some bonds, you can see that that fund balance really hasn't dropped off. And in fact, as your liabilities went down in '23 a little bit, fund balance stayed about the same, unrestricted fund balance stayed about the same. So I know really, when I start to see a divergence there, that's when I get concerned. When debt's going up and fund balance is going down, that's usually a bad sign. Unrestricted, our water and sewer net position, this is the next slide. And that really jumped up in 2023. A net position for a water fund is a little different than fund balance for a general fund. Fund balance for a general fund is really just taking short-term assets minus short-term liabilities. So we don't look at the value of this building when we consider your fund balance. This, this value is not included. For water sewer, we really get everything. We look at the value, the depreciated value of the lines that are in the ground. We look at all the debt, and net position is just all assets of the system minus all liabilities of the system. So net position is the best guess we have of what the system is worth. And you can see there was increase in 2023 from 2022 of about $3.5 million, $4 million there, and that's largely due to that transfer, those transfers over to water sewer. You then used it to build stuff for capital items, but then we show that as an asset depreciated over time. So that's why you see a jump up there in '23.
And Corbin, our interim financing numbers are in there as well, aren't they?
Correct.
Yep.
The next page, page four, we're just graphing out your major revenue sources for the general fund. And you can see, a lot of them were kinda flat until recently, and that's really because of inflation. So your general property taxes, you can see, jumped up a little bit in '23. The next line down are other local taxes, and you can see that's been increasing since 2020 at a more rapid pace. If you look at Mills Tax, Logic Tax, it's a percentage in the middle, you know? So as we get inflation, then those taxes just kinda automatically go up. The one thing that happened in '23, cigarette tax was up about $350,000 over the prior year, because that's a newly enacted tax from just, really, I think about two years The other thing to point out is that bottom line down there, that's interest income. And you can see, it really jumped after '22. Interest rates really kinda bottomed out, then in '23 they've come back up. So I added that one this year as a major revenue source because, or I wanted to point that out this year, because it really has taken a jump up. You can see, it's about, nah, $2, between $2 and $3 million of interest income there. The next page, I'm just showing you your assessed values. This, I don't expect some of these, these amounts to stay up this high, but one thing to point out is real estate is shown at 1/10 of its value. These are the assessed values. I know it says original tax assessments up at the top, but these are the actually the assessed values. We use real estate at 1/10 of the assessment so we can get everything on the same ground, effectively. You can see, real estate was just flat until 2023, and it really jumped up. Personal property really jumped up. The, the value of used cars has, has gone through the roof, as everybody probably knows. I would expect that to come back down over the next couple of years. I certainly hope it, it does come back down. But you can see your, your assessed values, you shouldn't say tax assessments, you should say assessed values, have been increasing, and that public service, those public service taxes have really been increasing. Those are taxes on railroads, utility companies, gas lines, things of that nature, public The next page, I'll go over with you, and I took this one back to 2008 because if, if I just showed you five or 10 years, I think it's kinda misleading. But this is the revenue sources for the school board. That top line is aid from the Commonwealth. And what happened back in 2005, '06, we were really starting to see a ramp up in, in state aid. And then the Great Recession hit, and that, that really dropped off quite a bit. So state aid didn't get back to its prior level. Took it from 2009 all the way to 2020, 2021 or so to get back up to where it was before. And then we've actually seen a pretty significant acceleration in state aid in '22 and '23. Next line down is, is local government operating contributions to the school board. So I try to take out the capitals, because those are one-time items, and they tend to spike up and spike down. And you can see how, how that's gone from about just under $10 million to close to $15 million, yeah, $15 million now. The next line, that's federal aid. Same thing we saw with the state aid, except we saw the spike up in federal aid in really 2010, and then it dropped back down after the Great Recession. The reason I want to show you this graph is you can see what's happened to state aid and federal aid just in the past couple of years. And we can look back to the Great Recession and see what happened to those things after the problem had passed. So we do expect, certainly expect federal aid to really drop back off as the federal government tries to get their deficits under control. So at some point, we're gonna see that, that go down. State aid, I would also expect that to go down at some point. I don't think it's just gonna continue to climb. The next couple pages, the next two pages are, VRS, the retirement system, wants us to check to make sure that everybody that's in the system should be in the system, and they're making a retirement contribution for folks. Everybody that retires or leaves has been taken out of the system, so they're not continuing to make a retirement contribution. I think I've probably told you that at some point in the past, they, they found that somebody retired near Virginia Beach that hadn't been in the VRS system for 20 years, but this entity had continued to make contributions for this person. And they kinda figured it out in a platform, got state retirement. So the state decided, we really need to start looking at this. We didn't run into any problems. The only thing, one thing they want us to test is once they, they wanna certify how much they're gonna pay, they want those payments to happen within about a tenth of the next month. So if you finish, finish March, they want the payment to happen by the 10th of the next month, by April 10th. And the school board was late making one of their payments for the year. So we have a comment here. It's not a big deal. It's something they want us to make sure the school board's doing and the county's doing, but they were a few days past that, that deadline of the 10th.
I'm sure VRS could cover it.
I think they could. I, I don't know why they're so concerned about that, that kinda time difference. If they were 30 or 40 days, they'd have to see.
I'm, I'm pretty sure they didn't have to get a payday loan to, yeah.
An anticipation note. But we do, we're required to put that in there, so it's. Page nine, we have a few recommendations for the county. Probably the, the biggest one, and this gets back to that interest income, is a lot of grants you receive are reimbursement-based, whether it's the county or the school board. And before, it didn't matter, when you were earning .25% on your money, you could spend the money, you know, in March and not request it until June, and you didn't lose much interest income. Now it's starting to matter. So we wanna make sure we get those reimbursement requests done within 60 or 90 days, so you can get it in the bank or the treasury and get that money invested. On page 11, and a few, had a few other comments there, but nothing major, just, just passing by. On page 11 is our community case of their charge of governance. If we come in to do an audit and Kelly and Regina don't provide us documents or something like that, it gets reported to you in this letter. We didn't have any problems. Every time we asked for something, they gave it to us very quickly. Same with the school board, no issues there. So you get the boilerplate letter. It does talk about some of the key estimates in the balance statements. That VRS liability I talked about earlier, that's an estimate. They don't know when people are necessarily gonna retire and how long they're gonna stay in the retirement system. In other words, how long they're gonna receive retirement checks. So those are estimates as to what those liabilities are, based on actuarial tables. And ultimately, that liability could be a little higher depending on what. It's also based on earning, you know, 6.75% of the markets, so they may or may not do that with a mixed portfolio of bonds and assets. So it's a pretty big assumption, a lot of big assumptions there. And that's really it. Like I said, the audit went very well. All the departments were responsive whenever we asked for something. We didn't run into any problems. That would've been the one thing I mentioned early on. And I'm really pretty pleased with the books of the calendar. So I'll stop there and answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Stone on the audit presentation?
I do not. You know, I almost hate to do it, but I've kinda starred it, and I'm not, I know the answer to it, but in being truthful with the public, I'm gonna ask it. My two questions have always been, is the county healthy and is anybody stealing money? Now, the second question, I know you have to tread lightly, but we had an incident this year.
Yes, sir.
Or, the school board had an incident, and, and I believe in transparency, so I'm gonna ask the question.
Well, the first question, yeah, the county's in good shape financially. And I think that, that's important, because we don't know if we're gonna be in a recession in a year or two. We don't know what's gonna happen. The second question is, we did have some discrepancies at the school, and that resulted in indictment. The good news is, it looks like it was called very early on, and the school board took action very quickly, so that's, that's the good news. We don't know what the final resolution is just yet, but I think that, that'll become probably in the next 60 days. I mean, I'm sorry I have to answer that question that.
Well, you know, the, Mr. Stone, I'm, I'm not one to sweep things under the rug. And like I said, I, I know the answer, but I believe in transparency, and, and I'm not gonna graze over it because I know the truth. I want the public to know.
And I, and I think.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, and I think we were fortunate that those discrepancies came to light early that we were able to find them, so.
Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Stone?
No.
I apologize, our meeting was not more exciting as it was last year.
Maybe next year.
Don't say that.
No, no.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
It's, you, you always seem to, to make numbers more entertaining. It's, and that's a compliment.
Well, thank you. I think it's my pleasure. I, I enjoy working with them. If you do have any questions, if you get home later tonight or tomorrow, contact information is welcome. So don't hesitate to give me a call or quick send me an email. I'm here to serve you guys, so, and ladies, so don't, don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, historically, we accept the audit.
We accept the audit. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year '23 audit.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
I think based on the sound outside, you might just wanna stay here for a while, Mr. Stone.
All right. We'll move on to old business. The first item we have listed is the Apex seating. Mr. Hankins, I believe that's you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. At the, the direction of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, we've gone back and have worked with the lowest respondent in the request for proposals for seating at the Apex Center. In our lease agreement with the LSE, Apex Drive Holdings, we committed to provide additional seating at the Apex Center to accommodate larger crowds. Ultimately, that would be good for the county because larger crowds mean more admissions tax and more revenue coming back to the, the county. We have negotiated with the preferred respondent. We, we've worked on design concepts, and those are included in your, your packet. There, there's a, a layout. It's, it's option one in your, your packet. The, the problem with the current seating is it, it is too flat. It does not rise high enough to give you a good view of the seat, of the playing surface. It is not close enough to the playing surface, and its seat widths do not meet current standards that you would expect in, in seating. This proposal, which is from Dream, Dream Seat, includes almost 3,600 seats. It does get seats closer to the playing surface. It increases the rise, so it will be a steeper set of steps. It also includes walk-throughs so that folks can come in on the concourses, walk through, and either go down to their steps or turn around and go up a set of steps to, to their seats. So it will get fans and concert goers able to see more of the action, a better view of what's going on. It also includes a press box and a sky, and some skybox seating to, to meet the needs of the LSE. Obviously, a press box, there has to be somewhere for the media to, to sit and work. The, the skybox seating is on the same level as the, the press box. There, there would be some minor modifications that would be needed to relocate the player entrance. That, that should be doable once the, once the dasher boards are taken out, they're modular so you can, can move the entrances around. The quote that we have does not include cup holders, and we had a conversation with the respondent today. They indicated it would be about an additional $20,000 to add cup holders, which I think I would, would recommend, just, you know, to, to make it meet modern standards. So the, the current quote would be just over $1.8 million. If you want to accept the proposal and move ahead, the staff recommends that we spread it out. it out over a minimum of 10 years. And Mr. Bear has been working with some potential lenders on this project and others. And we're trying to work out what the financing would be on those. That would spread out the repayment obligation and let people who are buying tickets seven, eight, 10 years down the road help with meeting some of that repayment obligation. That's my staff report. I'd be glad to take any questions that you may have. This did come out of the Buildings and Grounds Committee originally. I don't know if you want to take that as a motion or not, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bear, do you have anything to add on the financing?
No, like I said, I have been in, the only thing I'll add, I've been in touch with a couple of different groups. This would be a taxable issuance since there is a for-profit entity that is leasing the facility. One option looked at is a equipment purchase lease type option and trying to get some rates on it. The other is just going out to the banks and getting a rate on it for 10 or 15 years, however you want to do it, and look at spreading that out.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the staff recommendation.
Same move.
I have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any more questions or discussion on the motion?
So, Mr. Hankins, the final seating number will be the 3,600, correct?
It'll be just under 3,600. I think it's 3,572. Some of that is stool seating. The top skybox seating would be stool seating with an aluminum drink rail, more of a premium type seat to sell to sponsors. But most of them would be the type of seat that we have shown here in the example. The ones on the goal end would be retractable, so we'd be able to take those back, move them, tow them out of the way if they need to load in for a concert or something like that. But it would be the same style of seat.
So, speaking of that, if they, once they take the dasher boards down and the floors go on and they're doing concerts, what's the final number? Do we know how many seats we can get on the floor?
The total capacity is 5,432, if I remember right. So you would need probably another 1,600 portable seats for that floor level, which most of the event centers that do this sort of thing will bring those in as rentals, just bring them in on a truck and then put those seats out prior to the event.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your work on this and the Buildings and Grounds. That's one of the biggest complaints that, if there is any complaints about the hockey, it is the seating that's currently out there right now. So I appreciate y'all's work on that.
There are some color options. We didn't delve into color. We thought we would get some input from the LSE. The respondent said he recommends doing no more than three colors. We probably prefer just doing a couple. It helps with defining seating if you can say, I'm in the blue section or the gold section, just to use two of my favorite colors. Mr. Bear doesn't particularly like.
What happens to the old seats?
We would wind up selling those, trying to get what we could out of them or reusing them in other county facilities if there was a need, if we need them at, you know, ballparks or some other league fields, we'd be able to, you know, repurpose those.
I believe Mr. Bear has a contact for used seats.
I'll let Mr. Hankins make the call, but yes, I do.
You know you're getting old when not everybody up here gets that joke. Does anybody else have any questions or discussion?
One item, Mr. Chairman. This will require, since our auditor's sitting here, this will require an amendment to our budget, and it is above the 10% mark. So we will need to advertise for a public hearing following your vote on this, if you all decide to proceed with this. I would recommend that you all set a public hearing as soon as feasible possible. I think we could have it at the next meeting with the advertisement requirements to look at amending and appropriating our budget, about $2 million for this project.
All right, does anybody else have any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No. So approved. Before we move on, I just want to explain my no vote. And it's not that I don't support the project, but in the Buildings and Grounds Committee, I ask for attendance numbers and tax numbers, and I've got neither. Mr. Bear, Mr. Hankins, that insults me. As a member of this board, when I make a request and I can't get that information. If any member sitting up here makes a request, it should happen. All right, anything else under old business? Mr. Bear, Mr. Hankins?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think the motion included in setting the public hearing, so can we have a motion to set the public hearing?
I'll entertain a motion to set the public hearing for January 20...
23rd.
3rd? January 23rd.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett, a second by Ms. Lawson. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved, the public hearing is set. Anything else under old business?
I don't have anything else, no, sir.
All right, moving on to new business. First item on the agenda is our appointments. And how do you want to do this, Mr. Bear?
The easiest are usually your board-appointed, your chairman-appointed ones.
And then we'll go back.
And we can go back or as been chairman-appointed. If you've already made that list up, you can certainly just give that, you just state that you'll give it to us and we can email that out to everyone in the process, however you all want to go through that.
All right, I'll go ahead and do the chair-appointed positions. For Budget Committee, it'll be Mr. Smith, Mr. Terry, and myself. For Buildings and Grounds Committee, it'll be Mr. Cook, Mr. Burnett, and myself. For the Bar and Rescue Committee, it'll be Ms. Lawson, Mr. Smith, Mr. Terry. For Economic Development, it'll be Mr. Smith, Mr. Terry, and Mr. Morgan. Personnel Committee, Mr. Cook, Ms. Lawson, and Mr. Smith. Water, wastewater, Mr. Smith, Mr. Burnett, and Mr. Morgan. For the liaisons, I will be the liaison for the clerk of court. The liaison for the commissioner of revenue will be Mr. Terry. The liaison for Commonwealth Attorney will be Mr. Cook. The Planning Commission liaison will be Mr. Burnett. Recreation Commission will be Mr. Smith. The Sheriff's Liaison will be Mr. Smith. The Treasurer's Liaison will be Ms. Lawson. And, Mr. Bear, I have a procedural question on the school board liaison after attending the VACO conference. And we have Dr. Poole and Ms. Waggy in attendance. The question came up in one of the sessions of, in talking to other counties, why we appoint a school board liaison, but the school board doesn't appoint a liaison to attend our meetings. And, you know, we're a funding board. I would assume they would appoint a liaison to come to our meetings. And there's another model out there that there's a school county committee where they appoint three members of each board to get together. And, you know, I've always tried to encourage joint meetings, but we haven't had any. I don't remember the last one we've had. You know, we just heard from the auditors and we've not had anybody from the school board come and explain the situation. So unless, and Mr. Farthing, I'll look to you for guidance on this, these are board-appointed, so unless I'm required to, I'm going to leave that vacant until they have a school board meeting and come back and tell us.
It's not a required appointment, so yes, you may leave it vacant.
So I'll leave that one vacant. And I believe that is all the chair appointments, I believe, unless I'm missing one, Mr. Bear.
That sounds like all of them, sir.
So we'll move on to board appointments. First, we have the ASAT Board, which is currently myself and Sheriff Foster. And as long as he doesn't throw something at me, I believe we're both interested in reappointing. So I'll entertain a motion for that action. Can, we can do both?
Yeah, yes, yes.
So I have a motion to reappoint myself and Sheriff Foster to the ASAP Committee by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So approved. We have our Building Code Appeals Board. We have Mr. Dave Anderson and Mr. Donnie Repass. Do we know if they're, have we heard?
I have not. I did not know if Kyle thought of it. I would recommend going ahead and reappointing.
They both do a good job.
Yes.
Not that we have that many appeals, but, all right, entertain a motion to reappoint Mr. Anderson and Mr. Repass.
Same move.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Next, we have the Chief Local Elected Official Board, which I believe by code is me, so I'll entertain a motion to reappoint me. Have a motion by Mr. Cook and a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Next, we have the Crossroads Regional Industrial Facility alternate, which I'm currently serving as, and who is the?
Ms. Lawson is on that board and...
I believe it's just me, isn't it?
Well, I'm the alternate.
I think it is just you. I think that is correct, yeah.
Well, I haven't, I haven't appointed or had to attend any meetings, so I'll entertain a motion to prove me as alternate.
Same move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lawson, second by Mr. Terry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So approved. Next, we have District Three Government Cooperative. I currently serve as the appointee and Mr. Cook serves as my alternate. I'll entertain a motion to reappoint myself and Mr. Cook as an alternate.
Same move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Terry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Let's see, next we have our Insurance Committee, which consists of Mr. Bear, Chief Deputy Klein, Ms. Collins, Ms. Gwynn, Mr. Hankins, Ms., excuse me, Ms. Ayers, Dr. Poole, and myself.
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend all those remain.
All right, entertain a motion to reappoint all those listed for the Insurance Committee.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So approved. Next, we have a JIDA authority. Is Mr. Carpenter eligible?
Mr. Carpenter has served both of his terms. And he, and from the town side, David Couse, who was chairman and he was, David Carpenter was treasurer, both of them have served their full terms. So we do need another member there.
All right, so if anybody can find somebody that's interested in the JIDA appointment, send us an email or get with Mr. Bear. Next, we have the JPSA, which is Mr. Terry and Mr. Horny. Of course, Mr. Horny is no longer on the board. I'll entertain a motion to appoint, or reappoint Mr. Terry to the JPSA.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Coming in clutch. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Terry. I'd be willing to serve JPSA unless anybody else is interested, if anybody else is interested.
I think you'd be a good one on it.
Absolutely. I'll make that motion and then I'll point Mr. to call.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Anybody else want to do, I mean, any questions? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to me. Next, we have Mount Rogers Community Service Board. Ms. Michelle, the board, she lives across the street from me and she has not told me she's not willing to serve, so I'll entertain a motion to reappoint her.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So approved. Next, we have Mount Rogers Planning District, which I currently serve on and I don't mind serving on. It's a good group, so I'll entertain a motion to reappoint myself unless somebody else wants to do it.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So approved. Next, we have Mount Rogers Planning District Transportation Technical Committee, which Mr. Johnny Kinsler serves on and does a great job. I'll entertain a motion to reappoint him.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Next, we have the New River Highlands RC&amp;D Council, which is currently Mr. Nate Akers and Mr. John Hufford as an alternate. Mr. Bear, do you have?
I would recommend reappointing both, and I don't know if you can do it in one motion, sir.
All right, entertain a motion to reappoint those two gentlemen.
Same move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett, second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Next, we have New River Criminal Justice Services Board, which is currently myself and Sheriff Foster. Entertain a motion to reappoint.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Terry. Any questions or discussion on that one? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. New River Valley Regional Jail Authority, I currently serve on. The authority of Mr. Hankins serves as my alternate. And did you want to switch roles?
I am just...
Turn your mic off, don't even say anything.
I am just finding where I am, Mr. Chairman.
All right, entertain a motion...
Right here under the bus.
Entertain a motion to reappoint myself as the member and Mr. Hankins as the alternate.
Same move.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Hankins. Next, we have Planning Commission. We have Mr. Gary Beamer from West Whitfield. Was that?
Those are, those are usually nominations by the board member from that district, so.
I nominate Rusty Beamer for Gary Rusty Beamer. And have a motion to reappoint Mr. Rusty Beamer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Robert Emerson.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Smith to reappoint Mr. Robert Emerson to represent the Fort Chisel District. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Any questions or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Next, we have the Spiegel District.
I would like to reappoint David Midkiff.
Right, have a motion to reappoint Mr. David Midkiff by Mr. Morgan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Next position we have is at-large, Mr. Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to appoint, request appointment for Mr. Rodney Dunford for the at-large Planning Commission, sir.
Right, have a motion to appoint Mr. Rodney Dunford to the at-large position. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Any questions or discussion on that one? Right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Next, we have our set-off debt collection hearing panel, which consists of Ms. Kathy Vault, Steve Lester, and Mr. Terry Montgomery. Mr. Bear, do we need to appoint Mr. Linkus to that, or historically has it been the commissioner, or?
Um, I believe that it has been. Um, it might be a good one for me to talk to him and also confirm with the other two people on that one. We have not done that, and I don't think Ms. Collins has spoken to them, so if you wanna hold that one off until the next meeting, we can do that.
I, I know Mr. Montgomery is, um, gonna retire, so I don't know if he's gonna do real retirement, or he still wants to be involved in stuff like that, so we'll just put that under old business, and I think that, is that it? Have I missed any?
I believe that covers all of them, sir.
All right, anything else under new business?
I do not have anything else, no, sir.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to board reports. We have the Budget Committee. Mr. Smith, I believe it's you.
The Budget Committee met on January third, two thousand twenty-four and recommends the following. Amending and appropriating the following amounts for the Southcrest and Muskrat Road Projects. Uh, a hundred thousand dollars to account four one zero zero dash four seven zero zero six eight for Muskrat. Sixty thousand dollars to account four one zero zero dash four seven zero zero six nine for Southcrest.
All right, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion or questions on the recommendation? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Amending and appropriating two hundred and seventy-four dollars to account two two zero one dash four three zero one five oh to pay out mileage for the medical examiner's forensic testimony.
Again, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Adopting the proposed FY twenty-five budget calendar.
Enter, or, come from committee, we don't need a second. Any questions on that recommendation? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Waiving any building permit fees associated with the upgrades being made at the Fort Chisel Library.
Again, any questions on that recommendation from the committee? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Now, Mr. Chairman, just a summary of our meeting with the Friends of the Fort Chisel Library. After meeting with the Friends of the Fort Chisel Library, the committee, um, directed staff will meet with the Whit County, we directed the committee from the Fort Chisel, Friends of the Fort Chisel Library, to meet with the staff of the Whit Grayson Regional Library Director to discuss bringing the Fort Chisel Library into the regional system. Staff will be drafting an agreement between the county and the Friends of the Fort Chisel Library to outline operating and funding responsibilities for both parties.
And with that being said, uh, Mr. Smith, uh, just to give the rest of the board an update, the Budget Committee did meet with the, with the Friends of the Library Group. They have several new members. I, I don't know how many, but, um, it was a very productive meeting. We kinda went back from the, the original meeting that was held, um, there at the church across from the high school. I believe, Mr. Cook, I believe you were there, I was there, several of us were there, right after y'all were first elected. But they are confident in their finances, that they can continue to pay the mortgage on the property that was purchased. And so, so confident that I believe the bank is really willing to refinance it in their name to get it out of a private citizen's name. Apparently, they built up enough equity. So we've maintained, um, the board stance from the beginning, that as long as they provide the building, that we would provide the, the operations, and they were agreeable.
Yeah, I felt like it was a positive meeting.
Really positive meeting.
When, um, once we talked about the, uh, agreement that we mentioned in the summary, uh, they was very open to that, I think, uh, with Mr. Bear and Mr. Hankins on that.
And, and they did, um, and Ms. Collins is not here, but I believe she got their contact information. They were, uh, you know, they said that if any board members wants to come down and, and see the remodeling that they've done in the building, they're not a hundred percent complete, but I think they're complete enough that they could open. You know, they were more than willing to, to set up a time if anybody wants to go down there and look. It, it was very impressive, um, the amount of fundraising they've been doing, and apparently the, the community has, has responded very well. So, I, I don't know if, if anybody has any questions about the meeting, um.
What happens, I'm assuming this agreement has articles in there, if something happens and they can't make those payments?
We, we were.
We were up front.
Yeah, we were up front with them, that, that, that's gonna be the agreement. It is, once it opens, for it to remain open, they are gonna have to take, pay that mortgage. Now, piece of that is that once they get that property under their ownership or under their name, historically, the county has waived real estate taxes for nonprofit organizations, five oh one three Cs. And, you know, that's, we told them as far as, um, money going toward that, that building, that was about as, that, you know, that's typically where we go with, with the library in retreat. Of course, the county owns the one in Whitfield, they own the building. But from the get-go, the board stance has always been like they did in retreat. You secure a building, we will provide funding for the operations. And, uh, Mr. Farthing, which will, will be the, the person that draws it up, but they, they understand that if, if they go under, the, the library will, will cease to exist. Is that?
And, and that's, that's part of the rationale for having the agreement. It is a very steep yearly payment or monthly payment that they're making, uh, on that library. And, um, that's, that's been the position of the board all the way through. We would fund the operational cost of it through the regional library system, but not for the, the purchase of that building.
But they were, they were confident and.
I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, we were, like I, like Mr. Smith said, it, it was a good, positive meeting, and, and, I don't live on that end of the county, but I was excited for it. I know Mr. Smith was excited for it. And, you know, there's no disagreement that it's not a, a great location. But with a great location comes a great price tag, and if they can swing it, we're, you know, if, if they can keep it in their name, we'll keep the lights on.
Yeah, and then, then one other thing that we talked about was getting rid of the negativity, um, that surrounded, surrounding that library itself, the negativity that we're not doing our part, that's out in the community. So we, we stood on our stance from the get-go, that we would support it operationally. I think they understand it. Uh, and then shortly after the meeting, there was a pretty positive post put out by one of the ladies that was involved in the meeting, um, to try to squash out some of that negativity, so, you know, I, we couldn't speak for everybody on the board, but I don't think the board's changed their decision as far as supporting the, the library down there.
All right, anybody, or anybody else have any questions on the library? And that's all from Budget Committee.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith. All right, we'll move into board time. We'll start with Mr. Burnett. Uh, Mr. Chairman, oh, well, starting a new year, I would take the opportunity that a couple of years ago when I came on board, we ju, the county just had sold the Patterson Community Center, and, uh, there was some history to that and whatnot, but it being interest in the community to have that revived and have those talks talked about again. And if we could start looking at securing some money to, to replace that facility in the community, and, and that's all I have, Chairman. All right, thank you. Ms. Lawson?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Cook? Being National Law Enforcement Day, I'd like to.
Thank all our law enforcement officers for all they do for the county. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo Mr. Cook's, uh, comments with the law enforcement, thank, thank everybody for what they do to keep our county safe, and out of harm's way. Uh, I do have several things, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that or not, but, um.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, Mr. Bear, I noticed that the plastic container at the Fort Chisel Recycle Center, uh, it's, it's been pretty full multiple times. Uh, it was empty the last time I was in there, but the time before that, it was, it was pretty bad. Given benefit of the doubt, it was after the holidays, but if we can just keep a pulse on that.
Fort Chisel Center? It's common for all of them, but yes.
Uh, I've, I got a call from a gentleman that lives down, um, in the, uh, Major Graham's area. And then I started looking as I come by the, the TA here at, um, or not the TA, the Flying J right here at exit seventy-seven. But the trash around these truck stops is getting out of hand. The truck stops make a lot of money, you know, off of the travelers that comes through this county, and they can do a better job of upkeeping their facility, so if we can get someone on that.
I, I actually spoke to Ms., go ahead.
We, we've been talking about that with, uh, Mr. Blanchett, uh, on the animal control and code enforcement side. It is, it's common this time of year, and he's, he's been trying to go in and see the managers, but I'll ask him to step it up.
Yeah, and, and I realize that it's wintertime, and you can see more than you would when the foliage is on, but, yeah, we, we're better than that. They, they make more money than that, so they can take care of it.
And I, I noticed it down at the Kangaroo, whatever, at Poplar Camp exit there, in the process when we came through. And, and while speaking to him about it, we, we also have an ordinance about, uh, keeping the right-ofways clean, so if, if, if just going and talking in conversation, we can follow up with a, a letter and, and request them to get that cleaned up.
Yeah, and it's all on, it's, you know, I know we're just talking about a couple, but it's all on that one. Um, did we hear anything from VDOT about the lights at the parking lot at Fort Chisel?
Um, I have not heard anything about it. I did follow back up with them and ask about it. They are looking at some funding source options for that, but they are reviewing it.
Okay, and then the last thing I got, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hankins, um, where are we at, or do we have any plans in place to replace one oh three at the Max Metis Fire Department? I know it's one that they're, they're needing replaced.
Um, Mr. Parnell and I have been, uh, reviewing some available options, and, uh, Mr. Bear and I have been looking at financing options and, uh, trying to give you a plan. We do have, um, one point five million dollars in the budget this year to replace some fire equipment, and, um, we're, we're putting a recommendation together.
Okay.
So we're working on the plan, but we don't have a plan yet. I, I can show you the truck that I wanna buy, but, uh, we, we need to make sure that we're confident in, in what it can do, and that it meets the needs of the department.
Yeah, as long as it meets the needs of the citizens on that end of the county, I think, I think everybody would be fine on that one. Uh, yeah, if you could have something maybe before our next fire rescue, I mean. Thanks, sir, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Morgan?
Uh, I've got a couple of things to reiterate, uh, what the rest of them said, and thank the law enforcement for everything that they do. Uh, also, the, uh, trash collection centers, uh, a couple of that I've been to are complaining about the, the boxes being full, not getting them dumped. So that's, um, same thing that, uh, Mr. Smith said. Uh, the other thing is, uh, gotten some calls on the road. I've already talked with Mr. Bear and gotten VDOT started on that. Also got a call on another road, uh, they were worried about the washout, but it turns out that the road is not VDOT maintained. So they're gonna have to take care of it themselves. That's all I have right now.
All right, Mr. Terry?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only thing I've got is just thank you, shout out to all of our law enforcement officers in the county. We certainly appreciate you folks very much. Thanks, sir.
All right, um, Mr. Bear, I had some road questions, but after today.
They're washed out.
One thing, Wesley Highway, um, right there at, is it Ruby? Going up on the hill?
The straight, the straight stretch?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, you have VDOT look at some drainage issues Saturday, and I know the ground was kinda sto, sort of still frozen, but with the rain, it, it was, it was ponding really bad. And coming off Ruby, which is a private drive, it's dirt, um, once it gets down to VDOT right-ofway, there's no, that I could see, there's no drainage there. It may be overgrown, I, I don't know. Gap of the Ridge, I talked to you about that earlier, and I know you sent it to, um, VDOT, but I never got any follow-up. I haven't had a chance to go down there, so, um, when you talk to them, just see, um, and the resident I talked to, I explained they were on a six-year plan, which they didn't know, really excited about that, and they understood that VDOT's historically not gonna spend a lot of money, um, fixing a dirt road that's, that's very close on that plan. But I, I believe the, the complaint was the washboard and.
Missing.
That just, it just needed to be machined. But besides that, um, again, welcome, Mr. Morgan. Happy twenty twenty-four.
Absolutely.
And, um, I hope it's a good year, better than last year, so. Get better every year, life's fine way. All right, entertain a motion to go into closed session under two point two thirty-seven eleven A one, a discussion of personnel matters.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session. All right. Entertained a motion to come out of closed session. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Morgan? Was that right? I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now back in open session on the record. Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification?
Whereas the Whitfield County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, excuse me, in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of the Info Act. Whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Whitfield